I'm going to call meeting the order, we're going to rise for the pledge and afterwards, remain standing firm among them in silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for all the troops deployed. We start a public comment, Myra.
Good evening, everyone. I'm still relishing in December 2nd, I'm just, I'm just all over the place with that. Because not only myself, but I think a lot of people, residents, visitors from all over.
You're in front of the cam right there. If you can use the microphone because it hooks in.
Okay, sorry.
That helps, thanks.
So, I don't know where to start, it was just a wonderful evening. It rained on Friday, nothing on Saturday was beautiful, and then it rained again on Sunday. So we couldn't ask for a better day. We ended up with, I think, over a hundred participants coming down Main Street. And our photographer was all over the place. He said he stopped counting at around 4,000. So it was just a phenomenal evening. It started out with the pancakes with Santa, of course, the community center, that went over really, really well. Tasteful Occasions did that, and they, that's their baby now, they want to pick that up and continue to do that for us. What else? It was just, it was just a lot to take in for that evening. The date for next year has already been established as December 2nd, which is an important date in history. So we're going to try to, you know, lean on that as well for next year. But I think for next year being so much later in December, it's going to be, we're going to do a rain date. Because today's the eleventh, it's cold snow, and the further you push it into December, we don't know what may or may not happen.
I'm sorry, what date was the date again?
December 7th.
Seven.
Oh, seven?
Seven.
I thought you said second.
Seven.
I did too, must be the years.
And so we're going to look at a rain date following Sunday, just in case something should happen.
Sunday?
Yes, the rain date.
The eighth?
Yes. We got a lot of feedback, positive feedback, from all over the place. And I was overwhelmed to know that I got calls and emails and from people who were visiting from as far away as Bali. And they took it all in, and they were just mesmerized, is the word that they used. And we had visitors from Hawaii. And these folks want to know what they can do to help sponsor and promote us for 2024. So, I mean, I think, you know, it was a really, really good thing. And it's getting better and better every year. Andrew, I can't thank you enough for all of your support that you've thrown behind us and made sure everything's okay, that it was running smoothly. It's, it's just phenomenal. So we look forward to keeping this an annual tradition here in New Freedom. Even Senator Phillips put on her Facebook page, I don't know if any of you guys saw it, she says Hallmark has nothing on New Freedom. And I thought that was really something for her to put that out there.
And she was in the parade?
She was in the parade, yes. And there was a tree on the back of her truck and, yeah. We just had a lot of people and a lot of sponsorships and just made it a nice, fun night, you know? We were sad to see it. But then the party started at the community center, we didn't know what to expect because it was the first time we moved it there, because we'd always done it on the green. And it in itself was massive. It was, it was, the turnout was absolutely fantastic. We were able to, from the proceeds, from the sale, we had hats and gloves and we're all out now, but people were all over that and our sponsor, we sponsored this year Rose Fire. And between that and the, let's see, the proceeds from, I don't know. Anyway, we were able to-
You think the pancake breakfast?
Pancake breakfast, yes. We were able to raise over $750 for Rose Fire Department. So I think that was a positive as well. We are planning, Gail Spearman is putting together for us, and she's graciously awarded us, or allowed us to use Chapel Venues and Railroad sometime in February to do a post-parade meeting. For anybody who had any suggestions, comments, complaints, or anything, she wants to set up a date for us to do a post-parade social gathering there. And that will be, you know, I'll notify you guys or everybody of the date for that as well. The parade now has its own dedicated phone line, because it was kind of hard for me to try to keep up on the entries and the registrations and stuff, so it has its own parade line and website. So that'll take some of the stress off of me instead of me trying to handle it all. But I hope you guys enjoyed it, and if you weren't there to see it, I'm sure you heard about it, and, you know, we just want to continue with this thing for New Freedom.
And thank you, New Freedom thanks you, and all the kids had a great time, and I think we- Thank you, Myra.
Sure.
Myra, you said that you had a photographer there? Is there a website that we can look at those, see the-
The photos?
Photos?
Yeah, he downloaded them to me through Slugbook, but I can send them to you guys and you can see them.
Yeah, I didn't know whether you were going to put them on the new website or-
They will be.
Okay, that'd be great.
And the guy, his name is Lenny, with the digital mobile sponsorship band, he has them as well, so he's sending me the whole thing of the band's sponsorships and that kind of thing, so, yeah.
Thank you, Myra.
Sure.
Bernadette?
It's all in my name right now. So this is the third meeting that I've been to concerning the store next door, the stuff and shelves store. And I've been in touch with Andrew, and he has told me that they claim that the cars are there every night because they take an Uber back and forth to Red Lion. And it's the fact that they don't, they're there every night, I don't know where they camp out in the building or anything like that at all. Even this morning when it snowed, there was no Uber trucks in and out. I've also watched from a different viewpoint up on a hill, the condos, on a Saturday morning, and there's no Uber coming in and out of there. They are lying to the borough. And I think it's reasonable to ask for proof that they're driving an Uber or picking up an Uber every night, that they close and every morning when they come in to open. It's ridiculous that they think they can do this, I guess, and they're above whatever ordinances should be enforced here. And I don't know what the borough would do, if the solicitor would have a cease and desist after they can prove that they don't have receipts. If you price off the Uber, it's, I think it's close to about $1,800 a month just to get an Uber from Red Lion to New Freedom twice a day. So I'm going to keep following up with you because I feel as if they are lying, and I don't know where they're staying in the building, I haven't seen pictures from when the visitor, the visits took place or the inspections took place, so I have no idea. They could be camping behind a wall of boxes, I don't know, I just know they're there and it's really strange that I'm living beside a, you know, a store that is open from 9:00 or whenever they get out there to put the open sign on. Sometimes you do see cars pull up and just sit there and wait for them to open, and then they'll go in, they're not getting out of the car, it's an Uber. So these are, these are just facts, and I've observed it, so I'd like to know what the borough, how you will proceed. Because this has started, this has been since September 24th, so almost three months now they've been living there.
How are they with the lights currently? I know, I noticed I drove by there one night, and those lights look like they're facing directly out onto North Constitution and should probably be turned down a little bit because you're coming around that corner ahead, it's really, it's hard to see with all those, the lights, the way they're positioned.
There is a glare, there is still a glare on my side of the house, but I don't want to feel like I'm always coming here complaining, you know? But they did put up a shield, but it doesn't go all the way around the light, so I still get a bright glare into my home because the properties aren't angled like this, and my home sits like this, so there's still a part of that light on the side. But, yeah, that's something that should be addressed.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was mother and the neighbors, because like I said, when I drove by, it was hard to even see because of the glare. I saw people get glare.
Well, I mean, you don't have to be able to get the glare, but it is very bright, it's a bright light, you know?
So what is a remedy for this, solicitor?
Well, my understanding is Andy and Wade have done an inspection, they haven't found any indication that there is anyone living there. So if there's no basis based on inspection for cease and desist, I'm not sure we have the basis to send a cease and desist law.
So what is the remedy to-
To continue to monitor it, if there is some way to determine that they are living there?
We're trying to get to some way, she's monitoring it, she's come here to tell you that they are.
I'm asking if they can't move.
I think, in all honesty, you would have to hire somebody to monitor it, I mean, it's not really a police matter. There's no way the borough can go and ask them for receipts for an Uber, I mean, that's their private business, if that's, if that's what they're doing, I think it's a waste of money, but if that's what they're doing, it really doesn't have anything to do with the borough. The only ordinances we could, would be able to enforce would be if we could show that there was somebody living there. Currently, we can't, I mean, we went and inspected, there's no-
I would like to see pictures of what it looked like as well, if you inspected it, I would like to see pictures, I also-
Actually, as a property, as a citizen, you don't have the right to see those because it's, it's not a public record under the right to know law.
Okay, what about proof, since they're telling you they're taking an Uber back and forth, and I am, as a neighbor, right next door, see it, I work from home, and there's no Uber coming in and out every day and every night, dropping them off?
Legitimately, you would, we, for us to take action, there would actually need to be a police report or a third-party report. So for you to go any further with this, you would have to hire a third-party independent person to take pictures-
Monitor the property.
And they would have to see them in the building and monitor them overnight to make sure that they weren't leaving. I would say that at that point, we would probably at least have a leg to stand on to, to look into it, to look into it further, but right now, they're not doing anything wrong. There were no cots or sleeping bags that you saw.
Some of these people live in caves, in their country of origin, they live in caves, so I mean, I don't put anything past how they are hiding, whatever it is.
You're treading on dangerous ground. You're treading on dangerous ground.
The borough has-
What do you mean by that?
I mean, that's slanderous.
Oh, oh, no, I mean, that's a fact, that some people in those different countries-
I would really thank you for your comments, and if you ever have any proof or evidence, I would be more than happy for you to come back and talk to council.
So I will, I will hire a PI.
That's certainly your right.
I know it is, and, and I guess that they'll have to show proof, because I don't think it's reasonable or unreasonable to ask that they show proof that they're actually leaving the property when there's someone who lives right beside them that says, no, they're not, it's my word against their word.
Exactly, it's your word against their word. So that's why you would need a third-party or a police-type entity to come forward and say who's telling the truth?
I think where we're going though is we need to have a reasonable basis to send a stop and a cease law, and based on your, based on your complaints and coming here, the borough zoning officer and the manager both inspected the property, neither of them saw any sort of proof that someone was living there. And I, and I understand what you're saying, but they went in and inspected it, and they're the folks that are going to have to testify before MDJ, and unfortunately, our MDJ puts us through our paces pretty closely. So I don't, I think we would need to have something concrete to be able to go and say, they're getting mail there, you know, we see, and Donnie, is there any way we could tell if there's an increased water usage at night? Okay, so, I mean, there are ways that we can look at, but it doesn't sound like anything has risen to the level where we see showers being taken or extra toilet usage. I, I don't, I mean, there are ways to look at that, and I don't want to discount what you're saying, but at the same time, we have to be careful that we have some basis to move things forward.
Right, I understand that, and I only meant a cease and desist, I was only asking, is that what you would do if you could not prove?
It would be.
Not having them prove that they're taking an Uber.
We would have to allege a violation, and again, you don't want to use that power preciously and say, we think that this is happening, I mean, if there is, if, if, if anybody got in there and seen evidence of, you know, cooking area or bedding down or something along those lines, I think we would send the law.
Right, no, they're too smart to see that, but, okay.
Do we have wood parts of the building, is there a basement?
There's none.
No, I think it's a slab.
It's slab, okay.
Do they, do they have an account for trash recycling or would they-
They have a big bin, a big dumpster.
Yeah.
Oh, so they're just a single dumpster.
Okay, well, I, I will say you'll see me back and I will expend the, you know-
When it was told that they were taking building materials inside, when did the inspection take place?
The inspection took place, I believe it was after you had indicated that there were some larger trucks that made deliveries into the building.
A semi-truck full, so if you went in and inspected after that, you would see a ton of boxes, and I've seen the floor plan from the sale of the property, so there's, you know, there's not so much room back there that-
So what did they do with the inside with those building materials?
Well, they, that being a store, they could have put shelving units or-
You went and inspected, what did they do with all the building materials that they took in?
There was no evidence of anything additional in the rear storage area.
What type of materials did you say they took?
There were big bales of what could have been insulation, there were, it took probably three hours for maybe five guys to unload the semi-truck on Columbus Day.
So where were the bales of, did you see the bales of insulation when you went in?
There was, again, the only storage back there was just open area. There was nothing to indicate that there were any additional buildings or materials in there.
If they have an attic, the, the extra insulation could have gone in the attic that they've been insulating.
Or the walls in the back.
Was anything else identifiable as far as what type of material?
Well, yeah.
Is it all just a generic type box?
No, lots of metal, I have footage of it, lots of metal stud, metal-looking studs, a huge, probably six by eight feet, I have it in my notes.
Did anything look like new, like construction?
Is that drywall or?
Big sections of, I don't know if they were drywall or what they were, they were brown looking, I'd have to look at my footage because I was in disbelief that they were hauling all of this stuff out.
Could have been plywood?
It could have been plywood.
Could have been shoveling?
Yeah, I don't know, six by eight foot, big panels, six by eight foot, the last one, it took probably four or five guys to carry it, and it was so heavy, I don't know what that was.
Sounds heavier than sheet rock or drywall.
I, I don't know, but I will-
In my younger days, I could carry a piece of sheet rock.
I could too, you know, even now I could, I have to, but I will pursue it on my own, I guess, okay?
How long after they were bringing this stuff in did that inspection happen?
I guess I would have to look back through at-
I can send a right to know for those so that I can give it to the PI so they can actually monitor and, and, you know, have the evidence that they're in fact not leaving and all that.
Yeah, we would have to look back at when we received the complaint and then look back at the date that the inspection was concluded, and I don't have that.
I mean, and I do want to clarify, I'm not suggesting you spend the money to get a PI, I'm just suggesting that we don't have any-
I understand, and it is my right, like you said.
Oh, absolutely.
I live next door, and it's very unsettling to know that something more is going on there and they're not above or whatever it is, and so, okay, thank you for your time.
Andy, you have a question? Does the police or fire department have the equipment to scan the building looking for an infrared heat signal?
I would, I would venture to say-
They closed.
I would venture to say that that would be, well, I guess if it's after they closed, but I, I would think that unless you have filed a criminal investigation and you have a warrant, that would be a gross violation of your individual freedoms in the United States of America. The solicitor can probably address that better than I can.
Well, that's, it would be a violation of the fourth amendment, unreasonable search and seizure without legal-
Well, I must add that this morning, can I add one thing? There were no snow tracks in and out of an Uber dropping them off this morning, so I'm not delusional. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else?
At 114 North Constitution Avenue, four or five years ago, Met Ed replaced a pole there, and it's not been cemented, it's dirt around the pole, and everybody's questioning whose responsibility that is, and I said it's probably Met Ed, and one of the neighbors said, well, they look like they're trying to throw hybrid weeds around the pole.
So it's just the pole sitting in the ground without any reinforcement? Is that what you're saying?
The sidewalk was taken up and the pole was put in, but it was never cemented back?
I understand what you're saying, okay. Are there wires attached to that?
It's never cemented back.
No, but are there wires up top of the telephone pole that you're referring to? If it's Met Ed, it would have some kind of wires.
Yeah, there's-
There are, there is wires?
It's a electric pole.
And it's, it's the one that's leaning a little bit too, right? Or no, no, it's one that's straight up?
114 North Constitution.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, Andy took it down, he's gonna call Met Ed and we'll-
Is the concern it wasn't re, re, the sidewalk wasn't put back in, or was the concern that it might fall?
It's just turned around the pole.
Well, I can tell you the telephone pole in front of my house is just in the ground also, that's not uncommon, but I don't know-
I think what is concerning is that the sidewalk was cut out for them to put the pole in, and they took the old one out, it was never reconcreted.
So you, you, it's more important to get the sidewalk?
It's a tripping hazard, it's a walking hazard.
Gotcha, okay.
That needs to take care of.
That's, okay, that's the case.
I realize it's a long time of year for cementing, but people are questioning why, why it's not repaired.
Okay, we'll take a look at it, thank you. Anyone else? Approval minutes for the meeting held November 13th, and the continuation meeting along with it. Entain a motion.
Do we want to learn?
We'll do one at a time.
All right, make a motion that we approve the November 13th, 2023 meeting.
Second. Motion and second, corrections, discussion?
Under public comment, Denise Butcher talked about the parking lot, and action was taken to ask Tasteful Occasions to park their box trucks on the side of the building. And also under new business for the handicap parking space, the solicitor was to bring back ordinances for the December meeting, those two things could be accurately.
Now, we had a request for a, a handicap parking space in an area that is hard to accommodate, a handicap parking space, and he was going to bring back something to-
The solicitor was supposed to bring back.
Okay, I didn't get that message, but I will get that for you guys. I, I think what you're going to end up saying is we already turned down one person- But we have to, let's finish what's on the table first. I'm sorry. No, it's okay.
So this is a motion for the minutes?
Right, it's a motion for the minutes, so we want to add to the, we're showing a contact Tasteful Occasions regarding the box truck.
Isn't this a motion? Isn't this a motion to amend the minutes to include those items?
Yes.
Did we have something about box truck in the minutes?
You said there was an action taken?
Well, yes, you were going to contact them and let them know, yeah, that they're not to park their box truck in the parking lot, that they had to park it on the side of the building in the dirt lot, so I want that documented in the minutes because you're taking action to let them know.
I think they're not allowed, we're asking them not to park their box truck there whenever there is an event.
At all, their box trucks shouldn't be parked out there unless they're being loaded, if they're just sitting there, they're to be parked over in the dirt lot.
I'm not sure that's a lease requirement.
It's not a-
We have a request for the last year.
Citizens that come to use the parking lot or use of the community center.
I'm not sure what word you want to use to say that. Do you have a suggestion as to what sentence you want added to this?
Going to reach out to Tasteful Occasions requesting box trucks be parked in the dirt lot. And not in use, that's it?
I'm in my motion.
Second. Anything else? All in favor?
I'm aye.
Close? I bet it's aye. Continuation meeting?
Make a motion that we approve the continuation meeting minutes from November 28th, 2023.
Discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? I bet it's aye. Entain a motion to approve the treasurer's report pending audit for November of 2023?
So moved.
Motion is second, questions, discussion?
I have a question about page two, the total delinquencies for the refuse sewer and water, it's up to 57,000, it's a 20% increase from November of last year.
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to mention that as well. So just as a follow-up, and I'll get into that a little bit more, I did ask, when I ran that report for the end of the month, asked our billing clerk to kind of give an update, and actually, on Wednesday, the 20- And actually, on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, we sent out, the office sent out two hundred and ten collection letters. A hundred and forty of those were for refues and line, seventy were for water and sewer. So what's happening here? Because I knew that there were a lot of initiatives during the month of November to get that collection brief down through, there were shut offs posted. So when I ran the report, I was trying to figure out what happened. And then went back through the month and ran your report as of the fifteenth of the month. And the receivables were below around twenty-five thousand dollars. So what's happening is the due date is occurring on the sixteenth of the month, every month. So when we're running our report, we're actually pulling those thirty day receivables from a bill that was due forty-five days before that or about. So in the middle of the month, our receivables are basically.
High.
No, they're down, they're down basically at the floor. But because when that report is thirty days past due and you're running that at the end of the month, it bumps that total back up just because of that revolving cycle that hits every month. So again, in the middle of this month, we're way down low, but because the bill was, there was a bill due November fifteenth, it'll post back up at the end of the month. That being said, we're still sending out and posting shut offs every month.
So should you run it at a different time to reflect more accurately?
That was gonna be my comment tonight, do we want, do you want me to run one as of the middle of the month, at the end of the month, every month? To show that in the report and map that out, which is easy, I can do that. If that helps to get, get a better handle on how that fluctuates throughout the month.
Yeah, I would make a motion and include both a middle of the month and end of the month report so that we can see if we actually have a problem.
Because we have a notion already. So do I think we would have it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're in the middle of something, okay, yeah, we could do that afterwards, aye?
I mean, you don't, I don't think, I mean, necessarily, unless you feel otherwise, you don't really need a notion if that's what you'd like to do. Make sure to include that in the report.
What's the process for delaying when it counts? Ten, is it ten days, thirty days once we send the letter?
Usually what we do is send a courtesy letter, because things happen, people misplace people. So thirty days past due, we'll send just a nice notice and then after that, we push out a little bit further than that's when we get to the property posting for shut offs.
Do you ever include anything for the automatic payment with the billings?
Usually when they call in, we make sure that we're including that language to push that, because that eliminates this entirety.
Anything else?
The mold issue at the community center, what is going on there?
That was in one of the rooms upstairs, in a closet that.
Page fourteen?
There was an issue in the closet where the senior center is relocating and switching rooms from, from back on the room. They're moving to two oh one upstairs and in that closet at the ceiling, there was what appeared to be some mold. So we had a remediation company come in and take care of cleaning everything, hook up de-identifiers and basically seal that area. So it's taken care of. At one point, it must have gotten wet and from maybe a root leak or a stack leak or something and over time came over.
Is that the lions room that you're saying?
No.
That room have a problem also?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think, well, there was a problem, but they're gonna, they discussed it with you and I think you're gonna pull out all the deodorizers. We have four people in lions that are really susceptible to odors and have emphysema and all those other breathing problems. And as soon as they walked in that room, they closed up. We had two of them one night and thought we were gonna have to take them to the hospital, they were not. They just couldn't stand it, so, you know.
And we're on the treasures report here.
Yeah, the mold. Yeah, it's at the moment, she's with.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, you know, that room, they have to pass that one.
There are air quality checkers that you can use for if you feel there's mold in the air. They're relatively inexpensive.
On page fifteen, the Juanita Street fogging, five thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars. What was that five thousand nine thirty-six for?
That was just the first part of the treatments.
Part meaning one or more?
Um, it was definitely, it was definitely the first two intense treatments and I believe, um. Yeah, that would have just been the first two intense treatments.
So you're gonna get six more treatments for under four thousand dollars?
The, the other treatments are just the maintainer treatments, so they're not the invasive treatments. They're more low-key.
Or less expensive?
Yeah.
Weren't these for, weren't these foggers?
Yeah, this was the intense fogging, that kind of intense invasive fogging that we did for the first two.
And was eight treatments total?
It's six and two, that's correct.
So those, those six will be less than four thousand?
Yeah, I don't have that exact amount, but yeah, it was.
The only other thing, I'm sorry to give these questions ahead of time, it was a crazy day. I'm really perplexed on page twenty-five. It happened last month, there was an explanation, and it's happened this month. Two cleanings for the community center are nine hundred dollars, two cleanings for the community center are seven hundred dollars and one cleaning of the community center is four hundred and fifty, a total two thousand fifty dollars for the month. Which generally they always, one time was one fifty and if she came twice, it would save three. So.
Yeah, there were, there was an increase because of needing to clean later, because of programming that was in there on Thursday. Since that point, we have eliminated that Thursday cleaning because of some of the other initiatives that we did. So at this point, it will just be the two fifth, moving forward, it'll just be the two fifty for the Sunday cleaning.
Wait a minute, she made four fifty a cleaning and three fifty a cleaning?
That's per week, so that would have been the two hundred and the two fifty.
Wait a minute, it says clean ten twenty-two and twenty-nine, that was just coming two times.
No, that would have been four times.
There's four times in there?
Yeah, that's just, that would have been the start of the week. I have to look at the calendar, but she would clean.
Generally, you put the date, each day she came and that's what's throwing me off.
I think, I think what was put there was just the, the start of the week, so that would have been for actually four cleanings. It would have been two Thursdays and two Sundays. But again, we've, we've eliminated those Thursday, Thursday.
Two Thursday and two Sunday, so this nine hundred dollars is a total of four cleanings.
Correct.
And then the seven hundred dollars?
That would have been, that would have been, there was a time where she had, she was off because of a surgery, I believe. So it would have been three cleanings for that one. So it'd been basically, again, two weeks, but it would have been three cleanings.
And then the last one just says four hundred and fifty, it says clean, it doesn't even have a date.
That would have been one week.
So two cleanings. So two cleanings are no longer three hundred, they're now four fifty?
They were, yes. Because there was an increase, there was, um, there was programming that was in there on Thursday, was staying later, which pushed her later in the evening.
Who made that decision that this would just be raising? Did it come before council?
It did not, no.
That, that's not something that has to come before council.
Well, I would, we, we've talked a lot about cleaning and to have it increase and go to worse without even coming to council, I think. It's a mistake.
We had a couple of, a couple of issues that happened, the pickleball going late and she had to work into midnight and she asked for compensation for it, it was a judgment call, but it was certainly within, and he was right to make that judgment call.
Pickleball has the room till ten thirty, am I correct?
I believe so, yeah.
No, not that late.
Wasn't that late?
Not ten thirty, not.
Let's see when they start.
How many times is she coming now? Once per week? And when she comes at once per week, what is she gonna be paying now?
Two, two fifty per clean. And that's going to occur on Sunday unless there's an event in the year.
Yeah, you're right, pickleball is five thirty to eight thirty, but she had been coming in a couple of times at eight.
So I know that. I guess the only other thing there is there was a committee that was, that we had different prices and different cleaning companies for that, so when we have that information, we can compare that.
The Met Ed playground bill on page fourteen for twenty-seven eleven, you had said that that was for, they didn't, that wasn't anything for, since the cook shack was taken down?
Yeah, Donnie, you want to take that one? The bill, the catch-up bill for Met Ed that.
Yeah, apparently they didn't realize, they never goes, because they put a meter in down there and never goes. So the meter was put in, we did, we did everything right.
Fourteen. So I just weren't reading a meter, basically?
Right, they didn't realize that there, there are people didn't realize, there are people with the meter in there to verify their reader, which is reading meters.
And that's the building?
No, that's.
One of the buildings?
No, that's on the stage, that's where the meter's at on the stage, it does everything for the playground.
Oh, okay.
Not everything for the playground, I'm sorry. That's only just for the cook shacks, the three buildings and the stage. And whatever the carnival uses if they draw all the.
Gotcha. You couldn't have hidden the meter any longer?
No, but I did have to prove that we had a, a work order and stuff from Met Ed to, that everything was done right, you know, we did.
How long did that charge go on for?
Since the cook shack went down?
I guess, well, since twenty nineteen at least.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was, I think it was before.
But it was a valid electric bill.
I mean, we really, we were charged the minimum for those months, so it would have been anyway, there was no penalties, there was no interest or anything.
Is like a connection fee, kind of like your gas?
No, this.
That was actual use, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like the same thing when I came there and found out there was a work meter down at the house down there at Bain Park or for twenty-some years. And then when there was a meter, I found it and, you know, same thing.
I don't know what that bill was.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the treasures report?
Utility shut-off postings, okay, I see a, a name there. Is that a constable?
Yes.
Is that for one notice?
What, what page are you on? Because it would get split.
Well, seventeen.
Okay.
And then there's a couple of other places where.
Yeah, so we would split that out based on the postings, so that would get put into water funds.
Yeah, I think one was sewer fund, yeah.
Yeah, it would be all split out.
Now, does the person that owns the property repay the borough for that four hundred and seventy dollars?
Yeah, and that would, that's, that's not four hundred and seventy dollars for one property. I think a posting's, a posting is twenty dollars, so.
Okay, he does a bunch of them the same day?
Yeah, and then the billing clerk goes through and puts that onto their account, so.
Gotcha.
He's gonna pay the utility bill, the next thing they pay the bill, they're gonna pay those fees as well, yeah.
Good.
Same when you take them in front of the magistrate, the magistrate fees are included.
All included, yeah.
Other than the processing of those shut offs, there's no cost to, to make those postings.
All good? All in favor?
Aye.
O's? I bet it's aye. Sign regulation?
Following the last meeting, the draft ordinance was sent to our county planning commission for their review. So we'll wait for their comments and then move forward with the process.
So I'll just stay on for next turn?
Yes.
Update on the stormwater channel or constitution, have technical deficiencies?
Yeah, there's no update there, we did respond to the technical deficiency letter and are waiting D E Ps next round of comments.
Okay, Glen Rock Police Coverage Agreement Status. I think that was more like, we're done, right? It's done. It's been approved.
By other.
Do we have, I'm sorry?
By other municipalities as well?
Yes.
Shrewsbury is not gonna do it through a tax, they're gonna do it through their general fund. They've committed.
Talking about EMS, right?
EMS, EMS.
We're not talking, we're talking about the police coverage agreement.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That comes later. Is there an I G A? Is that?
Yeah, we had a meeting and probably a couple more meetings following and have it on.
Rental housing and occupancy ordinance, Kim? Again, this, uh.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know who put this in the packet for Rayak Reilders Association of York in Adams County. Where did that come from? That was you?
That was me, the reason I put that in is because we went through this process when I was at Spring Grove. The executive director at the time from Rayak visited the, the meeting and provided this, this similar letter. So I just reached out, asked if that was still the opinion of Rayak and she indicated that it was and it provided this letter. So I just put that in, again, you know, you saw that through the packet that there's quite a few municipalities that have ordinances like this in place. But, you know, just providing the information.
Yeah, I was just noticing that that's fifteen years old and a lot has changed in fifteen years. That's why I had you add this tenant protection rental ordinance to safeguard tenants' rights and ensuring fair treatment, habitable living conditions and protection against unjust eviction. That's originally what I personally was looking at, how we can protect residents that are renting. And this pretty much gives you a, a good idea of, um, the way a landlord should be treating their tenants. And that I think we should take on some responsibility to protect those tenants.
Tim, I noticed that, have you guys had a meeting yet?
Well, you and I had a meeting.
You and I had a short meeting.
Short meeting, yeah.
But have you had a meeting with your committee or?
No.
Okay. I notice happily that there's nothing in here about nuisances or, you know, none, none of, none of, none of the defining a family, none of the things that you and I talked about.
Correct.
And I guess my question is.
The nuisance is between, should be between the tenant and the landlord.
And the police if necessary.
If necessary, of course, yeah.
Of course.
I don't, I don't feel that this should be anything that goes as far as, say Glen Rock, what Glen Rock has. Yes, I think we need to know who is renting, who the owner is, how many units they have, so that we know in case there's a fire, how many people are in this building that we need to be looking for. And I think another problem that we're having is egress. I don't think there's anything wrong in between tenants for us to require the owner to allow us to take a look at the property and see if it's, it follows our zoning code, because that's what some of this refers to. Our zoning code, they still have to live up to it. How can we check it if we don't go in? You know, I'm not saying we, even that we go in every so many years. That might be nice, but I don't think the rest of you, from what you said before, are gonna go along with that. Because was that Fourth Amendment, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think.
But I think.
And I don't want to just have a conversation between the two of us, but, and please, anyone chime in, but the.
I'd like to hear.
I mean, basically Glen Rock's ordinance starts out by defining what a family is, and then it gives some broad police powers to the zoning officer and basically makes demands on the landlord to evict if tenant is dinged three times. Obviously, you know, the example brought to mind by, by my research anyway is, is the battered woman. The woman who has a husband who is an alcoholic and she's got two kids. First of all, she's not gonna call the police, because then she gets a violation and she doesn't want to be involved with her children. And second of all, she, you know, if, if you do call the police, if she does call the police, and they have to come out three times and she gets three violations, because that's to everybody in the property, she's out in the hole. She's out on the street with two kids and she can't rent in Glen Rock because she's had three violations, even though they're not really her violations, they belong to her husband.
Correct.
So that was, that was my concern that you and I talked about just tonight.
I agree with that.
What we spoke about.
And there are a lot, I've been looking, there are a lot of state laws that have come out, I think twenty twenty, twenty seventeen, and some other ones twenty twenty-three that came out, that all we're doing is backing up what the state law says. And we do that in a lot of our ordinances, and I think we should probably follow the state regulations and what their rental.
Can you point me through the state regulations on, other than landlord-tenant law, that regulate? Landlord-tenant laws, I mean, I guess really what I would think it'd say is, has the committee decided what your goals of a rental ordinance are?
Committee hasn't that yet.
Well, I think that would be a good place to start, because if you want to start protecting folks from unjust eviction, you're gonna become the tenant, the landlord-tenant court that I don't know that you want to get into. I mean, that's, that's a whole different ballgame. If you want to regulate the status of properties and make sure they're safe, they're clean, they're habitable, that's one thing. But if you want to go beyond that, you're taking on additional obligations and to tenants and to landlords that I'm not sure you want to get into. You see, you oftentimes see that in larger cities, where they'll have some sort of, basically landlord-tenant, like mediation process or something along those lines. But is that what your goal is? And maybe it is, I don't, I don't know. But has the borough council or the committee talked about what your goals of a rental, a rental ordinance are?
Our goals are for the health, safety, and welfare of the tenant.
Okay.
Are there current ordinances on the book to address that?
Not in our, not in our ordinance book. There are state laws.
There are now inspections, I mean, that's.
There are state laws that we would have to abide by, or the, or the landlord would.
Or quality of life, or nuisance, none of that addresses anything that you just said?
Most of it doesn't address the inside, I believe, except to the extent of building code violation.
Building codes. So that would, that would stay no matter what.
I mean, I think the argument that a lot of people make is, is you're regulating rental resident, or tenant, tenants and rental properties, but you're not regulating people who live in their home, own their homes. So if someone can own their home and have a piece of junk next to a rental home that's in really good shape, it has to be in really good shape to be, to have it rented.
But you can't hear.
But there's ordinances to address that.
We have ordinances against that.
I understand that, but do you go into those houses and make sure that they have working smoke detectors? Do you go in and check to make sure that they have, they're not running too many extension cords to an outlet? I mean, those are the kind of things you're looking for in rental. You're looking to make sure that it is safe on the inside and the outside.
And that's a state law?
Well, it's, it's not a state law, because what, what state law is it? What, what state law says that we can enter properties?
No, 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 no. We're talking about, that's what we're trying to establish. Can we go in in between, every time somebody moves out? And at that point, we have the right to go in. Are there smoke detectors? Are there fire detect?
If you have a rental, yes. If you have a rental ordinance, you can absolutely do that. You can, you can put that in there and say, if they change tenants, it's part of your rental registration, absolutely. I'm just saying, I don't think there's a state law that applies. You have that power as a municipality.
Not in between.
But there's not a state law that says you have to inspect a rental property each and every time, every so often. There's a lot of municipalities that don't do that at all.
I, I think what you were saying is there's tenant landlord law.
Yeah, there's landlord tenant on the books. I think that's what Kim was saying. But all that regulates is the relationship, the rental relationship on a lease basis. It doesn't regulate how the, the quality of the property, whether it's habitable, whether it's safe, those sorts of things.
I'll, I'll send you what I have. I mean, it includes lead-based paint, those kinds of things.
Well, lead-based paint is a federal law.
Here's a state or federal, well, federal law, doesn't that?
Yeah, but we, we don't inspect any property to determine whether it has lead-based paint or not. If you sell a property, you, when you, when you sell it, you have to report whether or not there's lead-based paint in your property or not. And that's for any house that was built before nineteen seventy-eight. All I'm saying is I think the committee needs to determine what, what your goals are and what you're trying to regulate and why.
And I think I just told you that. The health, wel-, welfare and safety.
That's really broad. That's very, very broad. I mean, do you want to, what level do you want it?
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Why don't you meet with your committee and try to come up with that statement? I mean, that's obviously your first statement is what you're trying to accomplish.
Who else on the committee here? Dennis, are you on? Do you want it?
You are on the committee, I think. Danny's on the committee, I believe, I believe Dave Bristorf is on the committee.
All I'm saying is, I don't, I don't think you want to set laws.
Those are your committee members.
That says things like.
No, we want to enforce laws.
But do you want to enforce whether or not a landlord can charge how much the security deposit can be? Because under a one, for a one-year lease, it can't be more than one month.
That's right.
Right. But why do you, do you want to enforce that in Newbury?
Don't have to. The state already has that.
So what, do you, or do you want to enforce whether they give a proper notice to quit? Within fifteen days or if it's thirty days after, between December or between November and March?
That's between, that's between.
Right. So ensuring, yeah, protection against unjust eviction. What does that mean, Kim? This is, this is from your email. So I'm asking you what that means and what, what you want to have in the rental registration order, the rental ordinance that addresses that. Right, right here. Protection against unjust eviction.
It's, that's a state law.
Right, but you're saying that this is a reason to adopt the rental ordinance?
Oh, I'm saying there are a lot of reasons to adopt a rental ordinance, because we've got places right now that are ready to fall down and there's not a thing we can do about it at this point, because we do not have a rental ordinance.
But your building code addresses that, does it not?
Apparently not.
So, but I think it comes back around, what it comes back around to a lot is enforcement. You can put fifty-four more ordinance on there, but you already got an ordinance from eighty-one for a landlord obligation that isn't adhered to. It's not enforced, or rentals.
You're talking about the one that's supposed to register?
Yeah.
I know.
It's the one from eighty-one.
And we, we've talked about that, and Andrew and I have talked about that. It's an ordinance and we're, we are working on it.
I mean, my understanding is when Glen Rock originally put that ordinance in is because they wanted to cut down on the number of rentals in, in the borough. They wanted to make it very difficult so people would not rent out their properties. And, and there's the kind, that's what I'm really talking about. What are your goals and what are you trying to get at with this ordinance? That's, that's all I'm saying is, then we can craft an ordinance that addresses those goals. I don't think you can just throw these, all these great terms out there about, you know, protecting against unjust eviction, ensuring fair treatment. What's fair treatment? Does someone evict someone because they got sick and they didn't pay their, their rent for six months? Or is it that they want to make sure that everyone of every color and, and race and, and gender gets the opportunity to rent a property? Is that within what you want to do?
That's, we don't have to. The state already says that.
Adderall, yeah. Why don't you meet with your committee and, and, I mean, that's the starting point, and then report that next month.
I want it to, I would like to see it be as minimal as possible. We went through how many rental ordinances? Most of them I don't think fit new freedom.
I don't, I don't think Glen Rock fits new freedom.
No, I agree a hundred percent. A hundred percent. Because I've been to their, I've been to their meetings and see the problems that they have.
Yeah, and then we can have a better discussion, I think, once you come back with.
Okay, I'll get ahold of them and see if we can do that before Christmas.
Well, certainly doesn't have to be done, but, well.
Well, it's a meeting the second, was the second Monday in January, so.
Yeah, it's primarily Red Or, and then there's a second meeting.
Well, Red Or is the first, the first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
First Tuesday.
Yeah, you're right.
So it'll be the second one.
Yep.
I, I will, I will take care of that. But I didn't write this. This came from.
What doesn't say where it came from, that's why it's hard to figure out. It just says it came from Kim Butcher.
Well, I did. I sent it from me to Andrew, something that I found.
Okay. Where did this come from?
I'm gonna, I'll give it to you. I don't want to take up any more time.
Okay. Then we'll leave it on for next month as well. Business.
Should I go to committees?
I, I'm sorry?
Upset. Should that go to committees instead of on business?
I believe it should.
Yeah, it should.
Yeah, committee.
You had already said that.
Sorry, I didn't have it.
No, that's okay. No, he just sent it quietly. But yeah, we'll move it. Consider approval of payment application number one in the amount of one, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents from Kinsley Construction for the crosswalk improvement project. entertain a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, payment application two. What did I say? Sorry.
So moving.
One second. It's been working okay, right? Every time I've been down, they're using it, the lights come on. I haven't noticed any work.
As long as they walk through the, the post.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking at, that a way to, in the future, to kind of push people through those.
Keep people off the railroad tracks.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what we're looking at next.
You also said that was a change from the original plan because of Pendott's request?
That's correct.
So thanks, Pendott.
Yeah.
Of course, they don't make anything easy.
What was extra?
Now, this is, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Extra overlay five thousand of change order?
Yeah, that was, I think that was approved as part of the first payment application, but that was for Franklin Street. Because of the intersection of the rail trail corridor and Franklin Street, there was some additional paving that needed to be done so that they could meet grade, just because of the situation that was there.
In other words, I had to build it up?
It was just an extension of the payment to make sure that they could.
Is there an engineer on this?
Was there? Yes.
Nothing here. Not where she lives?
No, you're looking here, that's customer.
Should he have a front of the first building's architect sign?
Architect should be right there.
It's down here where he certified the payment application?
Who is the?
That's Dan Creek with Warehouse.
It's Warehouse. On this other one, it's said right there clearly who it is under architect at the top.
I'm not sure why it really matters, but it's certified by the architect and the engineer.
Well, shouldn't, if the architect's looking at it, the engineer, shouldn't they see a grading issue? Wouldn't it look bad?
Okay, well, are you talking about the payment application or the grade? What are you, what are you talking about?
Well, just how, you know, a change order. I mean, you know, change orders become costly and sometimes, I mean, you go for the lowest bid, but then you get change orders, and right here, we're dealing with nearly ten thousand between two of them here in change orders. So sometimes, you know, you go for the lowest bid, but then all of a sudden, you don't come to the lowest bid because you've got change orders coming in.
Well, I can tell you, there was no one close on either one of these projects. And with almost every paving bid, you're gonna, you're going to have a quantity adjustment.
Which one of these applications or certifications for payment include sidewalks across Main and Franklin?
Yeah, that's still, we're still looking at that, or extending those from where these were.
That will be done.
We're still looking at that because, again, that requires P U C approval, and so because we're crossing the tracks, even though it's, even though it's private, it's still, we still have to go through those approvals to get that additional work done.
Because I would think Pendott would require that for.
Well, they did require it as part of their H O P review for this project, but.
Really? I would, I would have thought that because of A D A requirements, you would have that.
Looking at that, but the, the improvement here was straight through, and that, that is A D A accessible because of these. So they're not looking at going perpendicular from that corridor, they're looking at.
But you swear to me that there will be something.
We're, yeah, we're still. The issue there too is.
I saw some poor old man and lady trying to push the wheelchair across the, the tracks, and it's all stone. And he was, he, two young guys, I was still proud of them. Two young guys came up and helped him to get her on the other side of, of Main Street through those stones.
So that, that project goes into trying to get people through the opening and not walking around the infrared ballards, and then improving that sidewalk in ways that goes perpendicular to the routes. But A D A compliance is gonna be difficult in that area, especially on Main Street. Not, maybe not so much on Franklin, but it will be on Main.
Does every street have to be A D A compliant now? Every sidewalk, does every sidewalk have to be A D A compliant?
Unless it's technically infeasible, which you have to document. Because there are situations where it's just, you can't do it.
Good question about that. Is that because of the, the angle or the grade of, of the roadway there?
You're trying to match the roadway, you're trying to match the, the landscape that's there. You might be trying to match building and other side. there, you might be trying to match building and other sidewalk. A lot of factors play into just, you can't just throw that ramp in there and expect it to work.
And a separate question, you said it was because it was private, is that because of York County parks or because of the utilities underneath?
The rail line.
Okay, just the rail, okay.
It's not on the national system of rail lines, but it's still regulated.
Yeah, by the FRA.
Jeff Carter, the Baltimore?
Been a couple of years since I've done that.
I have a question. This is, this York County rail trail, how much are we responsible and do we get any back from them for doing all this work?
So we, we did get an allocation from York County Economic Alliance of fifteen thousand dollars and the rest of these funds were ARPA funds, American Rescue, American Rescue Plan Act funds to put these approvals.
No grants that were available?
No, I mean, not, not when this was all.
With that, okay.
Virtually no tax dollars were spent. Any other questions?
First and second.
Did you say, wait a second?
No, no, no. I said that we have a first and a second.
We do have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of payment application number one in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents from Kinsley, Kinsley Construction for twenty-twenty-three street improvement project. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, this is the traffic signal maintenance agreement. This is basically to get us part of the consortium in, with the other municipalities to save money and most importantly, to have someone who will actually do the work. So we're going to consider approval of the traffic signal maintenance agreement with CMHI. I would need a motion.
What was their yearly contract?
For R2 crossings, the annual maintenance is a hundred and seventy-five dollars for each crossing.
Yeah, it's for each crossing.
Okay, yeah, I see.
Make a motion that we approve that.
Motion second, discussion?
Okay, so it's four units total, broken up by street.
Correct, yeah, and then this, this allocates in that we're at a set rate for maintenance costs and markup on, on parts and labor and everything else. So all municipalities that are in the agreement, most of them have or will this month approve with, with CMHI.
Question, how come they're listed as four when each street, they're connected, correct?
They are, but they, they still, you have to make sure that everything's operating there, so you've got the infrared ballards, you've got the controller and everything else.
So even though they are connected, they're still listed as per, on each side of the street?
Yeah.
So the cost of this, of this MCHI, we're going to pay point to point from Myers Town, PA. At an hourly rate of seventy-two dollars an hour, seventy-two for a laborer, service vehicle ninety-eight, angular truck a hundred and seventy, I mean, lots of fees here. I don't see Stewartstown, Glen Rock, Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township in this agreement. They have no lights in any of their boroughs?
If they chose not to participate. I believe Glen Rock does.
You?
Yeah, they have, I believe they have one, but I don't believe that any of those other municipalities participate in this, and that was their choice.
So what would cost stoplights?
That was my next question. They've made a decision not to participate. Has there been a cost analysis done of our cost to participate versus, you know? We have a department here that can look at light bulbs, can look at electric and so forth. Because that's, my goodness, how many miles away is Myers Town, PA? I don't even know where that is.
It's in Lebanon County.
The charge for the preventative maintenance per year is a straight one-seventy-five.
Right. That's only if you have to call them for emergency maintenance.
Correct, which you're going to be paying because you're going to, you're either going to be calling one of those contractors in the area because the one that provided these services in the past has passed away and closed the business. So there's limited contractors out there, so whether or not you have a competitive bid or not, you're still going to be paying those costs.
Did you contact the other four, three boroughs and township around us to see what they do, why they're not in this?
They were all included in all the correspondence that went back and forth over the last numerous months, so they would have seen it. It's up to them to include if they want to go in it or not, but we've got all of these other municipalities that are included. I'm not sure what benefit it would be to reach out to those.
Well, yeah, and I see some of them have many, I mean, we have two, some of these, you know, they have many, but there's a reason why the ones immediately around us in it and I'm just, you know, I think it's a valid question of what they're doing.
Well, I guess if you have that question, then you can contact them, but I believe there's a motion and a second.
It's actually pretty good, it's fairly good planning to know what your costs are going to be so you can include it in your budget. So if Glen Rock wants to decide they're going to, they're going to take a flyer and see if their light ever kicks out, they're going to have to call somebody, they don't know when that's going to happen or how much it's going to be. At least you guys know what your costs are for budgeting purposes. So a lot of municipalities will do that just so they, they can plan for it, have a budget. Doesn't mean Stewartstown and those other folks didn't want to do that, but maybe they just didn't. People make decisions for different reasons.
Pienaar Electric LLC, did, did they really want four hundred and twenty-three thousand?
For preventative maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, what's going on there?
Half a million dollars versus thirty-two thousand. Just double checking that there wasn't a decimal point involved, please. I think I will maybe, yeah.
Do you even know what the difficulty to maintain these are? If there's a difficulty?
That include electric underground and all that, everything that's involved, so.
Well, there's a part, I think it's parts, sourcing parts or is.
Any other questions?
So the tri- fact is what, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five?
Not to, not to ask.
Our, our portion is three hundred and fifty dollars a year for, for preventative maintenance. Outside of if there's an issue, then we'll pay the rates that they did in here with. Obviously, there's not moving parts in, in our, our signal, there's not a lot that could go wrong, but we still need to make sure it's operating correctly.
If, if, say, say you sent somebody from the borough down there to look at it, just for, you know, with a quick glance, see if the wire can lose, if battery terminal corroded, does that cause any issues then with service later?
That doesn't negate the contract.
Have like a special key to prevent people or other municipalities from going back in there or anything like that?
I'm going to ask for a vote if there's another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
My vote is aye. Authorization to advertise the twenty-twenty-four meeting schedule. Motion?
Make a motion, we approve the twenty-twenty-four meeting schedule.
Second. Motion is second, is there any discussion or anyone have any problem with this?
I would recommend that the September, October and November meetings that are to begin at six be moved to the third Monday because to come in and try and do a budget in thirty minutes, you saw what happened this last year, what's happened every single year, it needs to be completely separate so that you are able to come in, address the budget, and then maybe you don't even need the November meeting because you were able to take care of it in September and October. That's my recommendation.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, are you saying there would be a meeting in addition to the second Monday or just?
Yeah, we, we meet the second Monday, that would be a regular borough meeting, come and have that, and then the following Monday would be for budgeting purposes only. You saw how smoothly that ran, this last continuation meeting, we came in, we talked nothing about that, we can get through it. This coming in and doing thirty minutes at the beginning or thirty minutes at the end, you don't get anything done in that time and then you're kicking it over to a continuation generally anyway.
You're saying the two and possibly the third?
Yes, so move to September and October, definitely November as needed.
Okay. So then that would get rid of the budget being on the twenty-first, October, then that would pass paragraf.
I guess so. Say, well, the, you know, just as needed, I, I don't know, who knows how difficult the budget will be next year, but.
I, I would suggest, I mean, that's, that's a good idea, but I would suggest maybe since we don't have quite all the information we need, why don't we have an introductory to the budget in September at our normal meeting for half an hour and then in October, we could have a separate, separate meeting and in November, if required.
Do you have a, as a, a separate continuation meeting, is what you're saying?
It's advertised, it's written in here as a draft, that there would be a separate meeting on the twenty-eighth, but.
Is that the third Monday? On the third Monday?
Does that give you enough time if you need the third Thursday to do your advertising and the budget before the December meeting?
Yeah, third.
Third Monday in November.
Yeah, but you have to get a twenty-day advertising period before your December meeting. I just, I'm just asking a question.
Make it the first Monday in November.
Because that advertising requirement for the budget, you want to have enough time, turn off a special meeting in the summer.
Make it the first Monday in October, in November.
Yeah, I like that. Why don't we just do the, and we could always.
I have a number of municipalities do that exact thing.
I see it all.
So introductory in September and then October on the first and November on the first? Anyone have any problem with that? I like it.
Why would, why would the August and October meetings change to the third?
Well, the October's always moved.
Oh, is that, okay.
Indigenous peoples?
I'm sorry?
So we're getting rid of the twenty-eighth and you're adding in October seventh and November fourth for budget meetings?
September will just be an early meeting and that'll be, and that could be an introductory budget, but there's going to be lots, so many holes, I think just having half an hour is probably fine for an introduction.
Get rid of that second sentence in there that it's beginning at six and just say it's six, everything's at six-thirty?
Sure.
That gets rid of some costs.
So even, even in September, we're going to begin at six-thirty?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, it sounds good, but we'll still have half an hour for budget?
We're not going to.
No, no.
I think Shrewsbury does that, don't they? They have a separate date for their, for their budget meetings.
They have a committee that they don't have, yeah.
Yeah, they have a committee that makes recommendations, but they don't do all this during the meeting, other than vote on the final.
Someone will have to remind me, do we have, do we have a motion on the tip on the floor?
We did, Ryan made a motion.
Ryan, can you?
Amendment motion for the elimination of October twenty-eighth, to have the budget meeting on October seventh and November fourth and all start times to be six-thirty. Is that sufficient?
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Approved an ordinance setting the real estate tax for twenty-twenty-four at two-point-three mils through general service, point-two-eight for fire and point-two for EMS.
Is it, do you approve sub-?
One ordinance. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
My vote is aye, motion carried. Consider approval of resolution amending the refuse and recycling fee. This is to keep pace with the increase in York.
This is one that they just announced?
Yes, we have a letter, actually from November first. Penn Waste was notified that the disposal rates at the York County Resource Recovery Facility are increasing seven dollars per ton.
So it's just the dollar per dollar that's coming from, from above?
Yeah, it's just a pass-through basically.
So it's basically like a five-dollar increase.
Per quarter.
Quarter, yeah.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
There's nothing in our contract.
It isn't your contract.
To.
In your bid specs.
Not incur charges above what we already contracted for.
It specifically states that if the tipping fee goes up, they can pass on my cost dollar per dollar.
Yeah, and the, the contractors have rejected bidding on municipalities that don't include that language in the past.
For this very reason.
Correct.
In other words, we don't really have any choice then.
No, it's a pass-through cost on the actual disposal. There's no markup on it.
Wouldn't we anticipate the change to be dollar wise from Penn Waste? Well, that's, that's not what their, our cost to them is gonna be if we're, if we're going up so much a ton, man.
There were, there was, I believe in twenty two, there were, the number, number was somewhere around, uh, twenty-three hundred tons of trash were reviewed from New Freedom, so if you take that times seven, you're somewhere fifteen thousand dollars, uh, increase. And that's basically what was portrayed from Penn Waste in that, was it fourteen or fifteen? Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have anything left at the end of the year in that fund, refuse fund?
No.
If we give a couple bucks, then we could, okay.
I mean, we, we apply for the recycling performance grant money every year, but that's dependent on the tonnage and how much money is available in the state.
Okay.
Is our recycling, is that, is that actually benefiting us quite a bit now?
There was a time where you were actually, they were making money on recycling, not anymore.
So they keep restricting what can be recycled?
Correct.
More and more municipalities are, you know, the residents are saying that the collectors are just dumping it. Trash, not here, not us.
Not, I know, I know they don't hear.
I've heard that from a lot of different places, so, um, they just don't have anywhere to send it to make money anymore. But this again is just a, this is just, again, this is just a pass through fee, there's really not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
My vote is aye. Uh, consider approval of a resolution updating the miscellaneous fee schedule.
Next year, can you do a little red line about what, for what's changed from one year to the next?
I, sure, I can, I can tell you really, um, I don't think, uh, other than we updated the information, um, obviously the ref, the refuse fee, we updated on there. Right. Um, we did update, we added, um, on the commercial, we added, um, inspections, mechanical inspections, because our building inspector obtained those certifications as well. We updated attachment B for the stormwater management ordinance after council's approval of the amended ordinance. We also updated some language on the community center rental for the cleaning and access card. We added in the security deposit for park facilities, um, as mentioned in the previous meeting, so that was added in. And then just updated attachment G, which relates to any cost that we have, as it relates to filing means on properties for utility collection.
Kind of like what we were talking about earlier with the water.
If it gets to that point, yeah.
What did you say about cleaning for March Goodfellas Park?
Uh, we added in a two hundred dollar.
Okay, that is for any building, pavilion, et cetera?
Yep.
Underneath that, okay, great, because there's some times they really...
I have a question about that, just because of the way it's, it's listed on here. Kind of like on attachment E, under, let's just say the auditorium, you have the security deposit there under, under the auditorium. You also have a separate one under Lions Club, this one is listed under, uh, bandstand electric under attachment F. Kind of giving it the appearance that it's only for the bands.
Uh, we can, I see what you're saying, um...
Yeah, that's the way I was...
We can just write that, uh, security deposit two hundred dollars for all, all buildings or...
Okay.
Yep, there you go, I like that. Now, the, the cleaning, is that going to be, no matter what, they are paying a cleaning fee? Or only if?
Well, it's a security deposit.
Yeah.
It's not a cleaning fee.
Okay, well, it says security deposit, cleaning and access card, so we're really on the contract just gonna say security, non-refundable security deposit. Right?
It's not non-refundable, it's a security deposit seven.
Give back the access card and...
Well, that's all, that's for the Lions room.
I, I was gonna recommend that this security deposit becomes non-refundable. There's so much issue with putting that community center.
The access.
Now it's going up to two hundred and fifty dollars a time. That one seventy-five becomes non-refundable.
Then you just, I mean, basically just have increased your fee for the auditorium to eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I thought about that same thing, and then I thought, okay, that hundred and seventy-five dollars for the auditorium, if they're not gonna get it back, what's the initiative for them to even try to clean it?
They're not. You just, you got the email from Rich before we came here, right?
No.
Rich sent out an email.
Today?
Yes, this afternoon, community center dirty, he reached out to Andrew. Employee was there in the morning, saw it, didn't clean it, they had to spend forty minutes cleaning it. People are cleaning it, it's not working.
That was on Monday?
Today.
No, but it, it occurred over the weekend and then Monday was...
This morning, he walked in, it was not clean, people are not cleaning it, they have security deposit non-refundable.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what...
You're gonna add another page to the, to the lease itself stating everything they can and can't do?
It's already uploaded to my rec, anyone that reserves anything anymore is pushed to my rec, so they have to sign those waivers and those disclaimers.
No glitter, no...
Same there.
Okay, it is in there, okay. Because, I think that's one of the problems Rich had was there was glitter.
But they're not cleaning, they're getting their security deposits back. An employee saw this morning, didn't clean it.
No, that, you, you...
It's what the email said.
Well, it wasn't this morning. It was yesterday morning. So there was an employee that inspected the facility on Sunday morning following a Saturday rental, using our system that we came up with as far as going into the building, documenting if there were issues. There were issues, um, but there was just basically a miscommunication between that employee and myself, and I took responsibility for that, that if there is an issue, the person inspecting that needs to obviously clean it up. So there was just a miscommunication going forward, once that is done, I'm sorry, once that inspection's completed, there are issues, they need to be addressed at that point. The security deposit is not returned, we did return the twenty-five dollars for the access card, but a hundred and seventy-five dollars was not returned for that rental. And I did speak with Rich this afternoon, and I thought, we agreed upon things moving forward, I don't know when that email was sent, but...
I still feel the security deposit needs to be non-refundable.
Then it's not really a security deposit, all you've done is raised the fee.
Okay, then change the word to a non-refundable one seventy-five cleaning fee.
It's not a non-refundable security fee, you're just raising your rate on, it's called what it is.
There's a cleaning fee.
Okay, then call it the cleaning fee, but you're basically here telling people that whenever they rent the community center, it's gonna be seven hundred and seventy-five.
There's been gnashing of teeth and heartburn and heartache for years because it hasn't been addressed. So one way to do it, instead of upping the cleaning lady by a hundred dollars a time, go ahead and put a cleaning fee that is not refundable. And you talk about raising this, and then it's gonna be eight hundred, well, you're putting in a private club right down the road that's gonna be in competition with the community center. So there's other things other than just raising that, there's, there's multiple things that could affect this, but I believe there should be a cleaning fee. Citizens have picked up the fee too much. And pickleball has had to clean it too much.
Who's gonna clean it though if we...
They said they've got a borough employee going in after events on the weekends.
I'm thinking, what if we have a water main break, what if we have a snowstorm and, after the weekend and, I, or, guys can't, don't have time to go in there and sweep or vacuum up? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think of the different ways this could bite us.
Do we actually have a motion for this?
We don't have a motion on the table right now.
Oh.
Then I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve, um, the resolution adopting various fees. So make that official.
You second?
I'll, I'll second it, so we can talk later.
I mean, currently, and don't get me wrong, I love pickleball, the pickleball people pay seventy-eight cents a day to play pickleball. And, I'm sorry, I just can't, um, and the reason they like the community centers, because if they go to the YMCA, they have to pay ten dollars a day to play pickleball. We had some, something in the middle where they were paying five dollars a day, that would give us another hundred dollars to, uh, to help with, uh, costs at the community center, which obviously we all know, we're, we're way, way in the hole in, in the community center. So while I agree with you that there has to probably be something done for the fees as far as a cleaning deposit, I think there also has to be something done with other people's uses of the community center, so that there's enough money to keep the lights on and the heat on and keep the floor clean.
Well, that comes down to this council writing leases like they do, where increasing the cleaning lady to two hundred and fifty a time, I don't even think you're gonna bring in, in from the lease to cover the cleaning. You know, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed, but right now before us is this cleaning fee. That's what needs to be decided on, and there needs to be a non-refundable cleaning fee to absorb some of this, and then if it's, you know, so if she's only...
I, I tend to agree that if you make the cleaning fee non-refundable, people are just gonna walk out, they're not going to, everyone's gonna sweep and floor at the end of their...
Andrew, I have a question.
They're not already, that's not true.
Well, the majority of organizations and people, I think, do, there are some that, yeah, you're right, they don't...
I think we've talked several times about organizations renting that community center, how it's been left, as well as personal, private citizens.
Well, if, if...
Talk yourselves to death up here.
My, my thought is if you're gonna charge a cleaning fee, and it's on the weekend, and Rec has people in there that are cleaning the place up after a mess, they should get half of the cleaning fee. Because they're doing the work for an hour before those people can even come in and play pickleball.
Andrew, I have a question, is, is there any kind of consensus on why people aren't cleaning, or they're just not doing a thorough job? Or are they just not caring? Do you ever get feedback from any of the other groups or individuals or anybody?
No.
When you keep the, the fee, they don't say, well, how come? Why don't we clean?
We've explained it to other renters in the past, and that's the end of the conversation.
It is what it is, and that...
Do you think if we increase that to just say, to just say three hundred, do you think that would, would help? Leaving, leaving it as a security, um, as a security deposit?
I did mine.
I mean, put, put a little bit more teeth into scaring people into, you know, we better, I want that money back. It's just a thought.
I, I think, I, I like that, I think if we increase the, the cleaning fee to two seventy-five and the access card twenty-five, and then we, uh, make it very clear in the lease that the room does have to be cleaned to get your money back, and then if not, then we, then we keep the cleaning deposit.
But what is the mechanism to make sure that cleaning deposit doesn't go back because? People, that can't find, we're saying...
He's recently put into place, a whole checklist and the whole agreement is written differently to make sure that they understand what they can, cannot do, as far as the glitter goes and whatnot. So I, I think we at least, and there's nothing saying that we can't revisit this, if that doesn't work. But I think we need to give it a chance, and I think putting, as Brian said, putting some teeth into it and making it a little bit more costly for them to leave in a mess.
And you have a listing of who's renting it over the weekend, and we can kind of know, oh, nobody's rented it that weekend? There's no need for them to check on it, because nobody was there.
So pickleball should not walk into a mess because there is a protocol in place from today forward?
Yeah, I, again, my, I take responsibility for this weekend because I did not communicate properly to an employee that if there is an issue, it needs to be cleaned up, so that, that was only me. Moving forward, we have an understanding, we have a process. I feel confident that we can stop this so that, as you said, they're not walking into a mess anymore. It was a mess, there's no doubt about it.
So, security deposit, three hundred now.
Two seventy-five cleaning?
Twenty-five of that is the access card.
Correct.
Does that give your guys enough time to clean on Monday? What time do they come in?
Oh, it really depends on when, when it occurs over the weekend, so I mean, it depends if it's Saturday or Monday.
Well, if it's a Saturday or Sunday, nobody's gonna be there till Monday.
Oh, no, because pickleball, if pickleball gets bumped on Saturday, they play Sunday, so it has to occur on Sunday.
That's, that's true. I, I just don't wanna push these guys. If they're not coming in till seven thirty.
I think at two hundred and seventy-five dollars, you should be able to get someone to come in for yourself. Two fifty or whatever and, and clean it. So I think, I think if we take the action to make the fee higher, and we've already taken the action to change the leases, I think, I think that would be, you know, would you change your motion then to make it, um, a three hundred dollar deposit, two seven, two seventy-five for cleaning, twenty-five for the access card? And we'll try it for six months.
I just, I wanna make, throw something out. You can't charge a fee to be punitive, you can charge a fee if it's reasonably approximated where you're gonna spend. If you're upset about paying a cleaning lady two hundred and fifty dollars for the cleaning, and you're charging two seventy-five on the cleaning fee, then that's probably an appropriate fee. If you're gonna be upset about how much you're paying the cleaning lady, and it has to be less, or we're not paying our guys two hundred and seventy-five dollars, someone might question the validity of that fee. So just, so we have that on the table.
I, I, yeah, I just picked the three hundred as a number, I don't...
I don't think it's a bad number, I don't think it's punitive. I don't think it's punitive. I think it would, we should be able to find somebody who would come in and clean the auditorium for two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, if the people leave it a mess.
I'll come in and clean for two-seventy-five.
Okay, Erica will come in, and I'll help you. Oh, we'll split it.
You got the job, you're already.
Um, and also, the security deposit of seventy-five, those need to be addressed to, uh, hourly, right? One-seventy-five, yes?
Well, I just have a question. It seems that the cleaning lady has been changed to Sunday night to accommodate pickleball. Who's gonna clean it for Friday night or Saturday night, when there's a wedding or an event?
Well, that, yeah, she'd always clean Thursday, so it was ready for the weekend. Correct?
Yeah.
Like, there was a committee, too, that was supposed to be looking at costs for, other costs for cleaning, I mean, if-
'Cause I didn't wanna pay eight hundred dollars to rent it and get the mess on Friday or Saturday.
Well, we, we came up with some ideas, and they, they got tabled.
Why don't you put this out for bid to local residents of New Freedom about cleaning, and that they will be on call for Friday through Sunday for events? I mean, it just, it shouldn't be this hard to figure this out.
You already volunteered. I think the problem is, these people already have appointments set up elsewhere to do work, to find somebody that is just gonna be on call if we need them.
Well, people were outraged at a hundred-and-fifty and kept raising their hands and said that they would do it, so seems to be like we have people in New Freedom that would be interested in cleaning this community center.
I have no objection to-
So what happens if they don't? They don't want, they don't show up to clean, and it's still a mess.
But pickleball will do it.
Yeah.
All right, so we have the motion, we have, we have the second. I'd like to amend my motion for the three hundred dollars, uh, for the security deposit, changing the one-seventy-five to three hundred. Um, the twenty-five dollar for the access card, is that what the card's cost?
Well, it was three hundred, that, which would be two-seventy-five for cleaning, plus the twenty-five, so a total of three hundred, and so we were discussing-
Okay, I got you, all right. So, the two, the two-seventy-five for cleaning, the twenty-five for the access card, my, my question is, is that what actually covers the card? Okay.
And address the other security deposit for seventy-five?
You're talking about for the hourly rates?
For the Lions Club, we're in more, seventy, but all of them are hourly.
There's two more to address.
All right, and then changing the security deposit from seventy-five for cleaning to one-seventy-five, and then that card remains the same.
I have a second on that.
And who made the original second?
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ours? My vote is aye. Approval of the twenty-twenty-four budget. Um, I wanna make, uh, one correction to a handout that I gave out, uh, about the number of houses. Andy pointed out after the last meeting that they're really not nineteen-hundred-and-twelve homes, they're nineteen-hundred-and-twelve parcels, so they're taxable parcels. Uh, two of those parcels are Franklin Square, and, uh, they're taxed as a, a unit, as a group, and, uh, they put twenty-seven thousand into the general fund, so that's the correction on that. Um, oh, and the other item, um, one of the, during, uh, public comment, one of the, uh, one of the people commented that, uh, the wage rate increase for twenty-twenty-four, shouldn't it be four percent? So I pulled, um, I mean, basically, everyone's at twenty-four percent, well, or four percent. Uh, Wall Street Journal's at three-point-nine, Benefit News is at four, uh, HR, uh, is at three-point-nine, Business Insider's at four, CNN is three-point-nine, The Merster Studies at three-point-nine, Staff Industry Analysis is three-point-nine, and CNBC, uh, survey is at four-point-nine. So I just wanted, um, oh, and government exec is at five-point-two. So I just wanted to clarify those two items from our budget. I would entertain a motion.
If a motion, we approve the budget of twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Ours?
No.
My vote is aye, motion carried. Mr. Solicitor.
Um, two things. One, I actually looked, you know, you guys do have a handicapped parking space section of your ordinance, and it's actually in section two of seven-twenty-nine, that provides for the creation of parking spaces. I don't know what ordinances you're looking for samples of.
Well, they're looking for individual persons.
That's exactly what it is. Your ordinance says that there's a, a handicap parking space established on one-oh-one West Franklin Street on the west side.
That was for Frankie Zeller.
And you, the ordinance already says that you can create handicap parking spaces.
But that was created for a reason, because of the funeral home being across the street, and he did not have anywhere to park.
Okay.
That, that, I'm just saying that I remember that that's the ordinance.
I'm asking you what you would, what you would like the ordinance to address, is what I'm saying.
I, I, I think there was a question whether or not, how you had to look at a, a request for a handicap parking space. Did, what factors did you have to take into account? I think this is the discussion in the last meeting. In, in this case, that they were looking at it the last month, it's, the property is actually narrower than the requirement of space, so you're, you're pushing on to other properties, and that was the reason another one was denied a few months back, so.
Well, that, that was, yeah, I remember that one, where we looked at what they had on the side available and so on and so forth, and what was in the rear. Um, I think it's within your discretion to determine what the criteria are, and you can handle it on a case-by-case basis. I don't think you want an ordinance to tell you, because there may be certain circumstances. In one instance, it makes it palatable to board, and in some other ones, not. So I'm not sure you wanna constrain yourself by an ordinance to say the basis for getting, giving one or not giving one, because you might get a flood of requests based on our criteria, and the next thing you know, you have handicap parking spaces all over New Freedom taking up offshoot parking. But I'm happy-
And that apparently is already happening, we've had two in the last several months.
You haven't approved them.
Oh, no, we did.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you adopted ordinance that says, "If you meet this criteria, you're gonna handicap parking space," you kinda, you, you release your discretion to determine on a case-by-case basis.
Is there anything under ADA that would require us to approve?
There's not.
There's not?
No. Because it's publicly, it's on the street.
It's still public access, if you're, have a handicapped parking.
I mean, it's for the convenience, it's, it's for the convenience of the person who has the handicap. And municipalities, I've seen municipalities do different things, but they look at what the level of that is, whether it involves a child, whether it involves an elderly person. Um, but you, your ordinance, I mean, your ordinance book says, we have handy, you can create a handicap parking space, and again, there is the one-oh-one, one-oh-one on Franklin Street. Or, on Franklin Street, it's the west side, it's section two-o-seven-twenty-nine. So it is in there.
Yeah.
It just, it, but the reason why you don't, probably don't have it in the, the criteria, or the, how you wanna do it, is because you're stuck there. Because if someone gives you a, you know, gives you a letter from a doctor that says they're handicapped, or they need, you know, they need to shorten the distance to their home, or whatever the case may be, and that's the standard, then you're going to be handing out a fair amount, or approving a fair amount of ordinances for that. Also, municipalities, that if they approve a handicap parking space, they ask the resident to put the bill for parking, for painting the curb, and, and, and putting up the sign, and so on and so forth. So I, I think you can reserve that, again, reserve that criteria, that discretion, but if you'd like, I mean, to see if I can pull some ordinances, I can, on that basis.
I don't think so.
I think we need to take a look at what the, the, the complete ordinance, what it basically says, and if they-
It says, "We hereby establish a handicap parking space at one-oh-one Franklin Street."
They didn't need to give a reason?
No.
No, it's, it's very short.
I think that, um-
It's like, "We establish a one-way street." It's, we're right hand, you know, a stop sign.
What's the date on that, do you know?
I think it was two-thousand and one, or, I think it was two-thousand and one.
Yeah, 'cause I was working at Park and St.
All I'm saying is, I don't think you wanna handcuff yourself on the criteria for that. Handle it on a case-by-case basis, but if you'd like to, I can get one.
No, I don't think it's necessary, unless council thinks it's necessary. I think we're just kind of, you know, we wanna be sympathetic to people who need handicap parking spaces, especially since some of us might need handicap parking spaces, but by the same token, we don't feel it's appropriate to take away the space in front of other people's homes in order to make sure we can fit in a handicap parking space.
The, the argument someone would make is, is public parking, there's no space in front of anyone's home, it's all just one street.
That's true.
Okay, so, again, if, if you decide you want me to pull one, we can pull some, uh, as examples, but there aren't many out there. Again, it also gets you into a dangerous mess, then, is to what the criteria are, if someone really is handicapped and files some sort of discrimination claim. I'll just handle one of these parking spaces. Um, and then also, we're having, on January thirtieth, uh, twenty-twenty-four, we're gonna have our municipal one-oh-one program. I think Denny's the only newly-elected official, but you're all welcome to come, that's the Outdoor Country Club, and, uh, we sent you out invitations.
Oh, we will?
Yeah. Last time we had it, I believe, it was like, uh, the dump truck got stuck at the underpass on eighty-three East.
That's right.
So, uh, you're all invited, you all be invited to that, to come and, um, get a refresher, and also, uh, have some food and drink.
Everybody has a copy of the report? Um, Leonard was just, uh, making sure everything's ready for December's meeting, and getting ready for Jamie Murray's organizational meeting as well. I don't think we also mustn't be asking questions.
I noticed within days after October meeting, the Welcome to New Freedom sign being poured down on Constitution, Kane and Roser, and Echo or something. I was just wondering, who made the decision for these new signs, and who, who chose this, and how did it even come about? It never came before council.
The, I was approached by Explorer York about updating signage as a Trail Town community. Um, they were willing to provide the signage for free. Um, the signs that we had were starting to show wear and fade and deteriorate, so we took advantage of the new free welcome signage.
I have some heartburn that it didn't come before council. I think a lot of us love our town, and would have liked input into the sign. I have heartburn that our community organizations that do a lot in our communities are no longer represented on these signs, and I'm not quite sure what "Have It Made Here" means.
That's the slogan for York County. The county has a hold.
What happened to Sweet New Freedom? We didn't even have it, didn't even have a say in this.
Yeah, Sweet, it says, "Welcome to New Freedom."
But "Have It Made Here" is a slogan for York County, that's fine, but you know, we had a nice sign, we, nobody got to put in, put it on the design of the sign, and I'm just saying I have some heartburn, I guess nobody else knows.
Well, I, I do, because I've gotten quite a-
But I just think that new people, our new Freedom residents should have had a say. I mean, where did the old signs go?
We still have them.
Where are, where are they? You have them, but where?
What sign are you talking about? The welcome sign, or?
Welcome signs.
The ones that were toward-
There were how many?
Four.
Yet, where are they now?
Of the course.
Okay, that's-
Are they gonna be offered to the Heritage or something?
Well, no, there are organizations that want their plaques back.
Hey, see, now you're talking about two different things.
Well, that's why I just wanted to know where they are, that they can come to you and say, "Hey, I went back."
And I told you in an email, there's been one organization that reached out and asked, and those signs are still sitting in there, waiting for them to pick up, weeks after they've been installed.
Well, I gave you a second one that requested me to contact you, and that was Alliance Club.
Why wouldn't those organizations have their signs replaced out here? Was that an option for them?
No.
Is it still an option?
They paid a lot of money, you know, for this.
I mean, isn't it an option to have the sign, you know, their signage put next to the sign here?
Whatever you would like to say.
Do, do we need that for, uh, an agenda item for the next meeting, since that would involve money for posts, or fence, or however, it would be displayed?
I think, um, you can ask the organizations, if they want, and certainly, I would think that you could put next to this a post, and put, you know, New Freedom Lines Club, the FW, a post seventy-twelve, Boy Scout Pack twenty-four.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, do we, if we need an agenda item for the meeting, because-
How many organizations were there that were, want listed on the sign?
I think they were different, some I'm sure, some disappeared, or whatever, over the years, but I think the one down by the bike trail, uh, on Warwick had the most.
Oh, okay.
I believe that's, just drawing from memories, 'cause I've thought about it. I very, I very well could be wrong about that.
I just think it would have been nice to get in touch with those organizations beforehand, and say, "Hey, we're replacing these signs, are you interested in getting your emblems back?" Before all of a sudden, they drive by and see a new sign and say, "Where's our old plaques? We can still use them."
I think there should have been a discussion before that even happened. Um, is this tied to grants at any, this Explorer York, any of the grants that this Trail Town and so forth, is this tied into that at all?
No. How long have you done, they've wanted to give us money to replace the sign?
Well, it's discussion, which includes-
But, Andrew, how many, how many different organizations do you have off the top of your head for the signs?
I'm not sure.
Kim, can you take an action to contact the Lions, and I could contact the FW, and Boy Scouts? Well, I, I already, I already have contacted the Lions. Because I, again, we can, we can put, you know, two posts right next to the sign.
Oh, okay.
And, and we could have their emblems right there, so I, I don't think there would be anything wrong with that, I think that would be a nice thing, actually.
I'll come down tomorrow, go down and see what organizations were on, and-
And you can contact whoever else you think would be appropriate.
That summer might not even be in existence anymore.
Well, that's, that's a good point. I mean, I think, I, I don't think it was bad to update, I think it was a good thing. Signs were free, it keeps us part of the Trail Town community, which is what we've been striving to do for, for the last few years, so I think, I think if we could just take the action to contact the various organizations to see if they want their signs next to the New Freedom sign, that would be-
Would that be on, like, a four by four?
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, I think the Lions Club sign is like yay big, so like, if you put two posts, you could attach it, you know? So like if you put two posts, you could attach it, you know, and have maybe two signs on each side or, you know, whatever. I mean, we'd, we'd have to look at the aesthetics of it, but shouldn't be a problem. You want to take the lead on that since...
Yeah, I can. I know, I heard from Rotary and from the Lions Club specifically.
Okay, so why don't you do that if you could and then come back to us next time? And then we'll put that on the agenda for action next time. Fair enough? I did want to make one quick comment about the DCNR Circuit Rider Grant. There was a lot of talk during budgets about the rec director being $113,450 for their budget. But after you take into consideration the DCNR Circuit Rider Grant and the fact that we're splitting it with Shrewsbury Township, New Freedom Borough's portion is only like $16,419, which gives us an opportunity to provide rec for various people with handicap based on ability, age. I mean, it'll give us a lot more recreation for our community. And that's really one of the biggest things we hear about in town is, you know, what, what do people do in New Freedom? So this might help to answer that question.
But with that grant, the cost will be increasing, increasing yearly at a minimum of 25%.
That's true, and hopefully program fees will be going up by more than that. So that's the intent. And that was the reason council approved the, the Circuit Rider Grant and the rec director. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, on behalf of VMS, I thank all of you. They really needed that money. It's going to come in more than handy. It's going to keep the doors open, basically. The other thing I wanted to discuss with you is, I think you all got these copies. Did you, did you hand it to them there somewhere?
Everyone wanted it at the reorganization meeting.
Okay, let's, he'll put it out at the reorg meeting. I think, and I'm thinking ahead of myself that we're going to go ahead with Robert's rules again. And I think all of you need to go over this so that we know what we're doing. We're doing some things. If we're going to adopt Robert's rules, we're not doing it correctly. And we need to make sure that we're following Robert's rules. It's going to make our, our meetings go better. It's going to go faster. Give everybody the motivation and the time that they need. So please take that, go over it, try to understand it. I think, did I send out a, a video to all of you about Robert's rules? I think I did.
You sent an email with a link and it's just a link. There were no contacts to the email, so I didn't click on it.
Did you have, okay, usually there, usually there's an arrow, a play arrow. This one, for some reason, it wasn't, but you click on it and it'll open it. And it explains Robert's rules and parliamentary procedures, which I think is always a good thing. This year, I'm, I'm going to sign up for almost every free PSAB webinar. I will also, once I get my copy of the webinar, I will email it to every council member, okay? So that you guys know what's going on. And that way, you don't have to sit there from 12 noon to 1 o'clock. Some of them lately have been going from 5:30 to 7:00, all right? As long as you sign up for it, you'll get a copy of it. I get a copy automatically. I'll send it to you guys. I want to thank, because I don't think we did this. I want to thank Public Works for their great job of putting up the Christmas decorations once again. I know it's a lot of work, but it brings a lot of joy and, and the festivities that we have in town. I have something else I want to bring up. Donnie, do you know who Robin Kohler is?
Yes.
Yes, so do I. American Public Works Association, Central PA Chapter, Scott Gibson Award for Meritorious, Meritorious Service to both the chapter and branch. The award is given to a branch member of the APWA who has given meritorious service to the branch and chapter for the betterment of the APWA. In other words, someone who has dedicated their time and energy to the APWA branch and chapter to meet and exceed their goals. I ran into her and asked her to please forward that. I congratulate you on that award. I have a picture of it, which I'll forward to Andy. Maybe you'll want to put it in a little, you know...
Oh, I have it.
Oh, you have it? Okay. But I think you deserve a... Thank you for all that you, you do here and outside, which this shows your supporting. Thank you. I... The only other thing is, is I am going to say, please sign up for PSBA. Please, we have the Plus membership. There shouldn't be too many things that aren't free. Like I said, even if you don't have the time to watch it now, once you sign up, you'll get that link that Ryan can't open.
I said, "I can't." So they came with an email with very little context. I felt it looked like your email got hacked.
Yeah, it wasn't. It just, for some reason, like I said, it shows a play button. And this didn't have a play button, but as soon as you clicked on it, it opened up. Did you get it, Danny?
Yes, I got it.
I sent them all out together.
What he's trying to tell you is the people in the active world, really working, we don't open things unless they have some, we can tell they're from somewhere.
I think, didn't I say PSBA?
Maybe, maybe in the subject. There was nothing in the body of that email other than a link.
Our IT folks beat us up for opening up stuff.
Yeah, I, I got things...
We don't know where it's from.
All right, well, I'll make sure, I'll make sure from now on that I, that I do that. Erica, Lisa?
The IGC met, just need to change some minor things. How many members are in, what was turned in back in? I think April of '21 was pretty much turned in as a complete document. One thing we'll be discussing the next time is to move forward in accounting for time as hours or incidents. So not a whole lot there. Police commission meeting. There was a pickup, I guess, with the Christmas parade. The police department wasn't told until the day before. Pizza shop deliveries were stuck in town. Police couldn't get to the department. They were stuck. It was a nightmare. They weren't told about the route change until the day before. So I think due to the size of it, there needs to be something, whether it goes through rec, whether it does oversight, something has to be talked about for next year when everybody's exiting because it just put in a logger jam.
We have a, a year to redefine the route. I think, I think we need, I spoke with Lisa Dukes and Fire Company, and I think what they want to do is try to come up with a pattern to get out of town. So that will, we'll take care of that. Even if we have to like stop the parade and allow traffic through at certain times, you know, that can certainly be done too.
Certainly started bringing this up with Myra at her, the event that she talked about.
Yeah, I got, I got a number of complaints also about people on the southern end of, of New Freedom. They couldn't get out of town. They were late for, for work. They missed work. They just, from south, you couldn't get through to get to 83. Some of us old guys that have been here, we know what shortcuts and dirt roads to take, don't we, Danny, to get out of town? But a lot of people that are living here now, they have no idea, and they were stuck.
But we will definitely have a detour route set up and make sure that, that traffic flows through town.
An older gentleman at Dunkin' Donuts accidentally stepped on the gas pedal and not the brake. Sergeant Teague went out there. He helped the older gentleman. That gentleman's son thanked Officer Teague for his kindness in helping his father get oriented and get through that situation. Looks like they're selling the 2014 Dodge Charger, 156,000 miles. They had three bids. It sold for 4,000. Updated the uniform pension to 35 hours per week for office, people that worked there. Then we made a resolution 2023-2 to approve the resolution that does away with the pension for office workers. And then the committee, when there's a full-time worker that qualifies for that, will come up with some type of compensation of 401, maybe something along that line.
What was the 35 hour per week you said about?
That's full-time. You have to work a minimum of 35 hours a week.
For officers?
No, office.
Oh, office, okay.
Why did they change that? Because they had accepted, I think, two people into that with healthcare and other things that weren't full-time.
There was a lot of confusion with that, where it was and it wasn't. And they got a letter, and then they weren't, and they were. So that's all been straight out with them now. It was voted on and passed, the 2024 budget, 2655, 659. I have New Freedom's cost-adjusted portion, 769, 945.
How close can you get to 770 without going over?
We need to appoint the IGA person for New Freedom. And the police bargaining agreement was voted and passed. That is completed.
Bargaining is at the union...
For the officers, yes.
That's a three-year?
Five.
Five-year.
Can I ask Erica to check two things? I just looked at the, the police report for October, November, and New Freedom has dated for 661 hours, Shrewsbury 630. But Shrewsbury has 82 incidents, and New Freedom has 65. And when you look at some of the incidents, traffic accident report of one New Freedom, three Shrewsbury alarms, three New Freedom, 17 Shrewsbury, public services assist person eight, New Freedom 11, Shrewsbury. And maybe there's a perfect explanation for it. But I just started looking at it, and I looked at the month before that, and it's similar. We got almost equal ties with Shrewsbury, but Shrewsbury's got 87 incidents and we've got 61. I don't know. I, I'm not familiar with, with how the police department does that. I'm just saying, it just, something doesn't look right. But maybe there's a perfectly logical explanation for it.
I don't know that I understand what you're saying. Why do they have more incidences than we do?
No, why do we have 30 more hours than Shrewsbury, but Shrewsbury has more incidents? And the month before, September to October, the time is about the same. 620 for Shrewsbury, 617 for New Freedom, but Shrewsbury has 87 incidents and we have 61. And the, if you look at the types of incidents, there, there is a difference. But maybe there's another explanation for it. I don't know what it is, but you've got a pretty good relationship with the police department. So I think you should be able, be able to find out what the explanation is.
So the, the 33, the difference there, the 33.02?
Yeah. Maybe there's something else going on. I, I don't know. And so there's only two I looked at. I looked at the, this last one and I got looking back and I went just to October, November, I'm sorry, September, October. Similar thing.
I'll fire on that. Who will sit on the IGA?
When are the meetings?
Tuesdays. It's the first and third Tuesday of the month. 7:00 PM, the first Tuesday in Shrewsbury. 6:00 PM, the sep, the third Tuesday in New Freedom. And so I need to have that locked off. Third Tuesday, 6:00 PM, this room.
When are they, when are these starting?
They've already started.
So the next one would be the third Tuesday, so it'd be the 19th?
19th here. 6:00 PM. 7:00 PM, Shrewsbury.
Are you not on it anymore?
I know they're asking who New Freedom's going to sit on it.
Oh, because you've been on it since before you, uh...
Yes, I'm, I'm asking.
Oh, so you have no problem being on it?
Yeah, I don't know how I'm being on it, but they need to know who's appointed. I can't appoint myself, so...
Oh, oh, I understand. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't quite understand where we're going. Yeah, yes, you, I, I will appoint you for, yeah, to continue with the IGA. It would be a logical thing to do. Thank you. Okay, engineering report for November. Warehouse. Will the study be for Marge Goodfellow Park, will that be out in the first of the year?
Yes.
Questions on warehouse?
Uh, paving projects. We have an actual list of what is on those, the paving, uh, projects. Like what streets? For 2024? We didn't, I mean, that's all in, in discussion at this point. Okay. I mean, I know there's generally a rotation of areas or streets. Yeah, we have to, we kind of come up with a priority list. Just based off condition and comfort factors? Correct. Okay.
Are we going to seek a bid to repave Marge Goodfellow Park parking lot in conjunction with the...
Well, that was discussed during the budget meeting, but there was no number included in the budget. Because it really wasn't approved.
There a possibility of a park grant if we made it part of the park?
Possibly. Are you doing improvements or something like that?
Can you look into that, see if there's any possibility of...
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of different funding sources. Do you think because of its proximity to the bike trail that your county parks would be interested in at least sharing some of that cost? Since it's literally right next to it? It might be more of something we look as a partnership with the economic alliance in the Trail Town communities.
That can certainly be, Dixon might not agree, that would certainly be something that we could use the amusement tax to help defray costs for the parking, parking lot repaying because that directs, directly impacts NCR. I'm just trying to get there, you know, if there's a... I'm just trying to get there. You know, if there's anything you can think of, you share it. Erin?
I'm sorry, can I, would, would there be any Trail Towns money that they would?
That's weird stuff.
I'm sorry, I had a. Okay. Because I know, what did, what did Glen Rock use to get a million dollars for their roofs?
I think that's a rack fee.
Okay. Well, you're familiar with any grants, everything that comes down.
That's why I asked, if they could come up with.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Erin, report.
Got a question. What is GSI?
GIS, geographic.
Yeah, G I S.
Yeah, Geographic Information System. So that's the system that we utilize for all of our utilities. So water, sewer, stormwater. Basically, it's, it's digital mapping and database management, asset management.
It's like two days ago, they put all the flags around town, where they were mapping everything.
Yeah.
Anything else? Public Works Water Report.
I have a question on, on well four. Was pumped double the hours of well three? Well, three pumped more water than well four?
Oh, that's because well three does two hundred gallons a minute, and well four does eighty gallons a minute.
Did you make any changes to the water system?
As far as?
Is chemicals or wasn't there a?
Recently, or?
Well, within this last three months, did you add something?
We're still adding the same chemicals and?
Why does it taste so much better?
I don't know.
As you get older and your taste smabs.
No, it tastes, to me, it tastes completely different. It's almost kind of sweet taste, too. I'm not complaining. It's great.
Would you just be able to put in parentheses, because I always wonder, and I gotta go find it, where these wells are, these four wells, like if they're on whatever road, just in a little parenthesis right there?
Sure. They don't have address, is what I give you.
Yeah, just a road, where, you know, closest. Thank you.
Place water?
On the bottom, it said, "Plant staff spent many hours adding, correcting, and verifying data stored on the Borough GIS program." What were they correcting?
So the basis of that system was a lot of plans that we had stored. But sometimes, sometimes those plans are, need updated and need changed based on field changes or as-built plans. So there might be, the plan might have shown a manhole here, and the manhole may be on the other side of the street, just things like that. Just realigning the mains, adding manholes, deleting manholes from that base map based on what's in the field.
So it's not that anybody put in the information incorrectly, it's moved?
No, 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 it hasn't moved.
No, yeah, not that it's moved. It might, it's referencing a plan that might have been changed during construction. And also, you know, pipe diameters, location of manholes. There was an old pump station that was removed. That was still shown, so they, the guys pulled that off and reconnected the lines. So just making sure what's in that system that was pulled in through old maps is correct with actually what's in the field.
If it's construction plans, at what point do we go, how do they put in the system? Like if it's construction plans that change, shouldn't nothing go in the system until it's?
Oh, some of those were changed sixty, seventy years ago and never reported. Didn't we find a lot of those, Donnie, when we redid some of the water pipes? That we didn't even have them on the, on the maps? Or they had taken and split one water pipe into three or four? One in particular was down where the old, where the barber shop is by the tracks.
It'd be a laundry mat.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be a laundry mat.
Yeah, because it was a laundry mat in there. They, they didn't, back in the old days, they didn't put bigger pipes in. They just added a whole bunch of one-inch pipes.
Yeah.
Instead of putting the four-inch pipe into a place, they put four one-inch pipes. That's just way to do things.
And every now and then, I know they get one wrong, because they've got my sewer line going through the middle of my yard, and there's no sewer line there, believe me.
And that was elicited in the cards, because, you know, we discovered that when they had,
Yeah.
were digging, they put the new mains in and stuff. And there was a couple of things like that, you know. All you gotta do is just upgrade everything, correct they should say.
For new construction, we would receive as-bills for, for construction that, for the system. That's where they're just going through and making corrections for things that were changed throughout the years.
The manholes get paved over. They, if they're in the right way, they, somebody decides that they don't like the way it looks. They just plant the grass tops all over the top when the manhole get lost. And then they're found, when you go out there, find, you know, there should be a manhole here. And they TV it, say, oh, there's a manhole here. Stuff happens all the time.
And my development's relatively new, twenty years, and the manhole's covered over with sod. Come dig it out.
They would clean out.
Yeah. Okay, zoning and code enforcement?
Captain with number three oh five. Today's December eleventh.
I did not get out today to check, but I'll be out tomorrow to check. My assumption is, what we were told is they were going to take the weekend to try to get as much, if not at all cleaned up. I'm thinking that probably didn't happen, so then we're back to issuing all the life applications.
Not too much as of yesterday.
I noticed the last name is spelled wrong. Three, you've got it twice in the treasures report. Both spelled wrong differently than one on top of each other, and then this one is a third spelling.
This is, this is all the billing software and the taxman, so this would be the correct spelling.
And then there was an inoperable pool on Constitution. I don't see on here.
Yeah, I don't believe there was any activity for the month of November on that.
What does that mean?
There was, there was no notice or anything sent for the month of November, because this is just covering up until the end of November.
Has it been, have they been notified? They have an inoperable pool?
Well, I think we just need to clarify that. But first of all, I'd have to check to see if there was one sent for this month, yeah. But, I mean, all pools right now are inoperable, right?
It's green.
Yeah.
Not covered, thirty degrees out.
Oh, it's.
We covered pools back in September?
Yeah, I mean, we can't tell.
Well, they have to. You have to tell them if it's green and there's a risk to animals and children. And, you know, that is a definite safety risk.
Well, the risk to children has to make, is a barrier requirement, not, not the fact. Otherwise, the risk would be there all the time. You just need to define what the issue is, and I understand what you're saying.
And an inoperable pool that our ordinance says.
Right, but it's not a danger to children, because otherwise, then that danger's there all the time, whether it's fully operational or not. That's a barrier requirement, not a condition of the pool requirement.
So we'll go on as a violation of the ordinance?
If it's a violation of the ordinance, yes.
You recall that was turned in?
No. I know you emailed me. I don't know it.
Yeah.
I'm sure you do.
I would say it's at least three and a half weeks ago. And I think that's something that should have been followed through when it was turned in.
Number one, Andrew, it says, "Closed, owner provided letter and removed loose roof panels." How about replacing them? Do you mean he removed and replaced them?
The issue was that the ones that were blown off were dislodged while they were hanging off the edge of the building.
So they had to come from the roof. So if he took them down, did he replace that portion of the roof? Because that would be a zoning violation if he didn't, correct?
Wouldn't he zed it?
Or it'd be MC?
That's not zed it.
Oh, I'm saying, if it's.
I mean, I don't know what, what, in that case, are we really citing them for? I mean, the roof's not exposed. These were over top of existing roof already. So when they were blown off, the pictures that are in there, it's not exposed. These were covering already covered roof, I guess, to, to stuff it later. Yeah, I mean, it really.
So that was the one that ended up going to the planning commission or?
Little lower to vortex?
Oh, no, this was one that.
You're talking about.
Wade, Wade tried to.
Get them to pay a permit, yeah.
Because we called it a replacement, and he called it a repair. And they found in favor of him that it was a repair, not a replacement.
Appeals board, and he won.
Yeah. So this isn't the same where he has no roof under certain parts of the building?
Oh, the roof is still there. This, these were pieces that I believe he just put on top to.
To have it there.
Add another layer. I.
Okay.
To gain access to see if it leaked, if it was leaking, so.
Yeah, well, my concern is, I know we can't put two layers of roofing material on a house depending.
There's nothing.
No, you can.
You can put two layers of asshole.
Well, it depends on the.
No, it's normal.
It has to be, it has to go through Wade, correct? If you put, because he has to determine whether it all.
It becomes an issue of weight and structure.
Correct.
Based on the number of layers of roofing, yes. I mean, I think, it's already condemned. I.
That's just a thought.
It's just more of a safety with that, that piece that was lodged around the chimney, blowing off onto the vortex where they're still parked, where they're parking people visiting the business.
Anything else? Recreation. I have a letter came to November twenty-seventh. It's from, it's to council members, Mayor Butcher and Andrew Schaefer. And it's New Freedom Recreation Commission Veterans Day Dinner. Says, "Dear New Freedom Borough Council Members, New Freedom Mayor and New Freedom Borough Manager, we want to thank you so much for your very generous silent auction donation of one full-day weekend rental of the community center to the veterans dinner that we held on Thursday, November ninth. Due to your donation, our event was a tremendous success. Our local veterans, our families and neighbors had a wonderful time. Because of your generosity, everyone went home a winner. Any leftover food and drink were given to the New Freedom Senior Center and the Rose Fire Company. Our silent auction and raffle proceeds went directly to our local VFW, Post Seventy Twelve. Thank you again for all you did to help make this event so successful. Thank you also to those of you who were able to attend. It's greatly appreciated. A special one to thank Mayor Butcher for filling in as the MC at the last minute, Andy Bobby for giving a shout out to our DJ and acknowledging his military service. He's a Bronze Star recipient. This was all truly appreciated. We hope you have a wonderful holiday. Thank you, Mary Ann." Very nice. And again, it was a wonderful event.
Just for clarification, you said three and a half weeks. You emailed me on November twenty-ninth, which isn't even two weeks. And it's at the end of November.
It feels like longer, but it should have been. Still, it hasn't been acted on. It's been two weeks.
I already provided that answer.
Yes, no.
I didn't say that.
Recreation.
All right, the Recreation Committee, Commission closet that's located in the community center was reorganized. I think a lot of stuff that was old, unused, was, was removed. The governmental agreement, you had a meeting or a conference call with them on Monday?
Today.
Okay. Is there any update, the chair?
We had the initial conference call and kickoff. We went over next steps about how we can make initial payment requests. They need to be able to see the job description, the review, or I'm sorry, the interview questions. They'll actually put a representative on the interview committee from DCNR, and we'll just work through that process for the first year.
We'll have a representative from each municipality as part of that process?
Absolutely.
Timelines for next steps?
Right now, there was a draft job description that was sent to Shrewsbury Township just for their review and input, and then that'll go basically through the process, back to DCNR, and then we'll begin to appoint that group to conduct the interviews once we do the adizment. So, I mean, ideally, you know, having somebody in place by the start of the second quarter is probably realistic, but it could go, depending on what kind of candidates we're working with.
Another three, four months. Okay, all right, thank you. I said the numbers for pickleball were increasing. It's mostly due to the colder weather. They are looking at some new collapsible pickleball nets. This is in an effort to alleviate some of the storage problems in one of the closets that's adjacent to, excuse me, adjacent to the auditorium. Fold up basically up to the size of a, what do you wanna call it, an easy-up canopy?
Yeah.
Is probably the best way to describe that. So they did make a motion for that, and they are, I think you ordered them the day I came down last week. Did you let Rec know about the, that they were ordered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again, Veterans Day, already mentioned here. Again, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars going to the VFW Post Seventy Twelve, which is just incredible.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's, that's very, very nice. That was really it from the Rec, which meeting on December. Anybody have any questions or anything else?
Did you want to say anything about the article?
No, it was actually in an email blast that DCNR sent out. I just thought it was interesting. It's local, another circuit rider and regional effort that's, you know, really close to New Freedom. I just heard the narrative. effort that's, you know, really close to New Freedom, so just, it's written there as an fire grant.
Have anything else to say about EMS and fire funding? I have a meeting Thursday with Fire and EMS, so I'll find a report next meeting. Are we closing out the Sosco Centennial Committee?
Yeah, the only, because the, uh, work went down, I think Andrew was getting some prices together, didn't he? He has some bids on signs and that down on the playground.
Yeah, yeah, the community has prices for signage.
So that would be the only thing we have to.
Oh, to replace the Marge Goodfellow signs.
Because we were gonna put those signs placed up.
Were the telephone pole signs saved, they were taken down? Announcing it?
The banners?
The banners?
The banners, I think, they, they, I think it's still in your office, Andrew.
No, those are the cowboy ones for NCR. Do you have those?
Somewhere.
Yeah, they're somewhere.
I'd say it would be nice for the heritage to probably have one or two. If on display in a museum.
Oh, they do.
Did you take all those down, Don, Donnie, when that, all those, you got, you still have that?
Yes.
We have, we have them somewhere.
Oh, okay, that's.
Yeah, with NCR, that would be nice to put on that heritage building on the side, if we could hang them from the side of that.
Inside?
Yeah, they, you're not, these are just a vinyl, they're not meant to hang up.
Oh, until they blow away.
Well, not if they wanna keep them for a.
We're not, we're only gonna have one Sosco Centennial, so.
That will be in the season next, right?
Committee that I appointed, Kim and myself, and, well, actually, the mayor.
Recreation?
No, it was for, um, health and safety, that's it. Um, so we're gonna add to the committees, the rental agreement committee, um, and also the health and safety committee.
Can you do so?
Sorry?
You will put a community center also, because they're leading?
Yeah, we need, we need a community center too. Andrew's on that, what, is Andrew on any of those?
Community center, I think.
Yeah, you were on the cleaning committee, I thought, for the community center. I thought so. The additional public.
I thought that was him and Dave Reesdorf and Bernal were on the cleaning committee.
I thought Andy was on, because remember, you and I were the ones that talked about the, the machine to clean the floor.
I thought it was just Dave and New York.
I think, I think Bernal, you're on that too.
Yeah, I thought, I think I am.
Yes.
I have to look back in minutes.
Okay, see what, see what you find, because I, if not, I think we're gonna need your help a little bit on that. Well, you could always pull him in. Yeah, he had some recommendations, and I thought they were very good, that we never tabled. Entertain a motion to adjourn prior to nine-thirty.
So.
On favor? I'll, I'll go inside.
Go buy a lottery ticket.
Maybe two?